We'll call the meeting in order at 12:04. Welcome to our public work session. The meeting is being audio recorded. There's no public hearing, so we leave any other business and then we'll start. Okay, new business then, safety and security. We had a meeting with Dennis Cutler from Peacock, Peacock whatever, CCAP.
All of them.
Yes. In order to discuss our moderate and such the other day. And it was noted that there are not any, I don't think, what do I want to call them? Line members or suppose non-directors that are on the safety and security committee?
Correct.
And it's part of the rules that we're supposed to. So we, meaning Judy, meet Pam. We thought it would be a good idea to put this on the things to discuss today. We just should pick a couple.
Is the warrant still on them? You might have been confused.
I have not seen the warrant.
She's on the records committee.
Oh, okay, all right. I knew she was the one I thought.
This is the safety and security committee. I believe that it's the sheriff, his commissioners, several of the directors, but no non-directors or non-elected officials. So I was thinking, I don't think it'd be a good idea to get a union representative. So I was thinking maybe Fran Hanlon would be a good person to put on that committee. Or anyone else you can think of that we could put on there. I'd at least like to have two others.
Is it possible to get someone from the union and, or, excuse me, someone from the sheriff's department and the jail? Because those are areas where we do have a lot of claims.
On the security committee?
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure Collins shows up to that.
Well, he did, yes, but he's a director. As is the sheriff and the chief deputy.
So somebody that's just as staff as a jail.
Yes, general corrections office or the great.
Probably Craft.
Craft, okay. So then you get union, ASME union and SEIU union leadership. Those are two good ones. Then you get two of the, when you get your problem area in the jail.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Do you have the bids for the tax anticipation? Or do I need to?
I have.
She has them.
Oh, you have them, okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Anyone else?
Do you want someone from Hickory Street or from 911 represented? Just because we're looking at risks at all the different locations?
Possibly. Or here's an idea, here's an idea. What about our maintenance specialist?
Okay.
Because he's been around and seen everything. Could be kind of logging in the back of his memory.
Yeah, Matt should definitely like.
Matt's on it.
Oh, so to get Alex on it.
Get Alex on it. Matt doesn't usually come, so.
Okay.
He sent, we sent Alex, he has sent Alex anyway, so let's just get him.
Alex would be good.
All right, so it was all, we'll have Alex, how do I say, Fran and Ben. Very good. Did you have a comment, Mr. Scott?
Well, I just recommend that you, being with my experience, have somebody from each department represent them out so that you have questions for them, they can address them without saying, "You didn't ask us."
Sure, and I think we accomplish that by getting the union representative from each of the unions to take it to their union.
That's a good move there.
Did you say Rusty Bar, was it? Who was the other person?
Ben Craft.
Ben Craft, thank you.
Sorry, what?
If someone had a suggestion, who would they go through?
They would then go through their, either the director or their union member.
Like I have a suggestion, so how would I present it to you?
Oh, well, you can come to the sheriff, you could come to any of us.
Oh.
Yeah. Because I think most of the elected officials are on that. If they're not, they're certainly welcome to be coming.
Yes, and it's actually the running of this committee that gives us one of the credits that helps to reduce our insurance premium. So we have to kind of meet the standards that they set up for the committee to do.
Did he send you those standards, by the way?
Uh-uh.
I think, he said he would, and we want to review them, just to make sure that we're up to snuff.
Okay.
All right, anything else on that? Good, thank you. Let's go ahead and open the bids for the tax anticipation notes.
No particular merger, just how they're stacked in here.
How many did you get?
Four. I think, they all had bids.
Who's that?
Okay, Northwest, for the $5 million, fixed rate 2.27%. Did I say Northwest? Yes.
Yeah. That's a significant jump from 2017.
There's a little bit in here about waiving another fee, but we'll have to clarify for sure because of the attorney's fees or whatever that we ended up with on that, to see if any of these include that too, so when we compare them. But their rate was 2.27. Yeah. Oh, they didn't. Northwest just bid on the $5 million. Erie submitted on 4.5 and 5.
And 5.
So the 4.5 would be at a rate of 1.503%, and the $5 million would be 1.517.
Okay.
And again, I have to look through to see what other fees and everything else go on. This is PNC Bank. Oh, Harris is always really confusing.
Are you berated, Judy?
Hmm?
Nothing. Joking.
They have this fluctuating daily something or other minus some floor and some. They quoted the same, same rate, whether it's the 4.5 or 5 million. And it looks like, if I'm reading everything through their different amounts in here, I have to take more time with this, but it looks like it's 1.731 for PNC.
Or the 5?
Either one, whether it's 4.5 or 5. I don't see a differentiation falling down through on the amounts. And the last one is Key Bank.
And they did not bid last year, right?
No, they were going through the buyout merger or whatever.
We had three of us here, didn't we?
Key Bank just put in a bid for the $5 million, and they went to a rate of 1.3.
Hmm. So the lowest, tentatively, since we haven't looked at the fees, it is Key Bank.
Just straight looking at the rates, it looks like it's this, but we have to see what else is, what fees are included or not.
Right. Okay. So you'll, are we voting on that on this Wednesday? Doesn't look like it. When do we need to, do we need to put that on the agenda for Wednesday? We might as well already.
Might as well.
I don't see what not.
Okay.
Okay. So if you could just work up the final analysis and bring it to our Wednesday.
Okay.
We'll go ahead and add that to the Wednesday agenda.
They were all still grouped fairly close together. I mean, the different year, I think we had quite a stretch on them, so.
Yeah. Good. All right, thank you. Any public questions or comments about the TAM?
I have, I hate to be the one to comment, but in my experience with opening up bids, upon opening them up without your solicitor here or with your solicitor verifying that they're up and ready to go, why do you wait to Wednesday to award the bid? It looks a little suspicious to some people that you opened the bids today, you got the lowest bid, which was Key Bank, if I'm not mistaken, but you didn't award that because you want to do further investigation. That should be settled here upon opening the bids, in my opinion.
It's a $5 million, you know, transaction, and we've got to review what the fees are going to be. I mean, just because of that percentage rate that's written in there, that doesn't necessarily mean that's all we're going to pay for whatever the loan is, and we have to evaluate that. And what are the terms there are in the agreement? I mean, there could be terms that we don't like or that aren't good for the county.
So actually, what you do is open up the bids, and then you, between now and Wednesday, the three commissioners will decide which one they want to go.
Yeah.
Questions about that.
The decision cannot be made separate from this meeting, from the Wednesday meeting, but we can't approve it in this meeting. This is a work session, we can't alter that.
Just wanted to verify that I understand that.
The county code specifically says that we open it at this meeting and then award it at a.
Yeah, that's a better answer.
Historically, I usually do a spreadsheet comparing to what draws we've done last year, say if we did each of these years, whatever cost of in the interest. And sometimes there are additional attorney fees, so what we have to do for the paperwork. Some of the banks assume the attorney fees themselves, so we have to find our own attorney to it. Then a couple of them have closing fees that you have to pay at the end to close out. So it's not just a rate comparison, there's a few other things. And you have to really read through all the wording in there to see if it's included or not.
Now, that's been explained, I'd agree with you. First, I, I turned out in the bid.
And technically speaking, if anyone here, like in the public, wanted to evaluate these bids now, they could do it during the course of this meeting, you know, if they wanted to look up.
Mm-hmm. Or between now and Wednesday.
Yeah.
All right, anything else on the TAM? Very good. Registered reporter, please.
I was notified last week that the state is raising our JCP fee on all of my offices from $3,550 per the documents that are effective to $40.25. They wanted it effective immediately, but we have talked them into November 30th, and I think we're all going to do it at the fourth, effective at 4:30 that day. So it doesn't actually go into effect until December 1st, so it doesn't goof up our reports.
Excellent. So this is just something that AOPC can kind of mandate you to do without any wording apparent?
Yeah. Last time they did it in the middle of the month, and it really messed everything up, so they did let us.
So we clear that's a $5 increase.
$4.75.
What all does that affect, just really speaking? Like?
A lot of my recording fees for the recorder deed site, and then anything that carries a JCP, both my other offices, like probates.
Yeah, for the orchids cordon for, yeah.
Guardianships, just about every filing.
Okay.
So recorded deeds will be up from 66 to what?
I'll let you know. I don't know.
Okay.
$6,550 and we're adding four. Yeah, and we wanted to make it up another quarter so it was even, and they won't let us do it.
Oh.
We'd have to go through, it would have to be our fee that we raised, and we have to go through a meeting and through the, get a judge of signature.
So it'd be at least $80. If we raise our fee, how much? Where would that hang you at? Directly to the, so not that.
But if we raise that, it wouldn't raise it just a quarter.
No, right.
But not more.
I was wondering that. I noticed you had had the conversation about putting that, putting some funding into a blade.
Well, that, yeah, that was the other thing, was the, the $15.
Right. I just haven't thought about that in a long time.
I didn't either, until they started kicking around both of those ideas at the same time. And it's up to each individual county commissioners for.
Yeah. So I have my upset sale, and I still have to record those deeds. I can't remember the money for that. I'm very busy. Well, I can't, I have time, but I can't do it.
I mean, I wish I could change it, but all I was able to do was change it to the end of the month instead of right now.
Does that mean you're paying?
I haven't paid for the deeds, because I can't go back to the buyer, because I might already have collected if you sell.
Call and say we need a little bit more.
Yeah, can you give us $5? Yeah, that'll do it.
All of this increased fee goes directly to the state, none of it stays here. Okay.
There's no way for you to get back to, like, say, our fee.
That's the, that's the most we could change it.
We're going to know new taxes budget out of it, right?
Not new tax, it's just a.
Well, it's a fee.
How many properties?
What was that?
How many properties would that affect?
I think it was, we sold 20s. I mean, not much, but it's just the idea that I'll have to.
Well, they had kicked around the idea of making it effective, actually, prior to when we were notified, and then, and then if you didn't raise them, back to that, you know, retroactive, then when the auditors came through, they could charge you for every dollar. But we got out of that, luckily.
That's what the mafia does. It's like a shakedown.
All right, well, so currently, we've got, for instance, the $50, what was it? Very, really close to $50 for the whole fee.
$6,550.
All right, so with the breakdown, how much does that go to AOPC, to the state? How much?
Right now, it's going to, starting the end of the month or next month, it'll be $40.25, so that goes to the state.
Okay, and the rest goes to?
And a portion goes to affordable housing.
Okay.
And records.
Records.
And the, like, the extra payments and that stuff go to the county.
The general.
General.
Okay. All right, thank you. Anything else? Any questions from other directors, public? Okay. Projects, any project updates that the commissioners want to bring to sale? Do you want to bring up the voting machine?
No, we should wait until we have, you know, we're in, have more research on that.
Oh, for still working on my part, we, the WCEA is going, has, I guess, submitted an application to the state for our cap money. Early intervention. Judy, did we engage Susquehanna after we approved that contract? I assume, you know, you notified them, but I don't, I wasn't.
I really don't know what was done with them. Same here, I have the commissioners, do you have an actual contract to sign, or was it just a?
Yeah, we.
Fusal?
Yeah, we approved.
I would have assumed that she would have sent the signed contract back, but I haven't heard from anyone about.
I know, I signed one, I just don't, I don't know if they contacted us yet about scheduling. Okay. Now what data on the 911 overhaul records?
The thing I want to share with you is that the, they had the pre-construction meeting for the boiler, went down and in a single day took one of the boilers out. They went to install the second boiler and found out that the space between the two boilers is too close, so they're going to have to, have the engineering team come in and like take a look at it to see what they're going to do with, because the new boilers are slightly bigger than the old ones, to either move around the space in the room or to do something else. Anyway, it's going to add some time to the development, which I assumed it was going to happen anyway. There's no way it was just going to. When he told me that they had one, I got the good news, I'm like, what's that? They already got one boiler out. I'm like, really? They did it one day, took it all out, and they started putting the other one in, when they realized, oh, you have to have 30 inches or whatever, it was something like minimum distance between the two boilers, and that they weren't going to make that. So, yeah, so the, what's that?
It's pretty tight down there.
Yeah.
It feels quite noisy today.
Yeah. Well, there's, I'm sure they're down there trying to go, you know, how do we fix this?
There's times we can't hear our phones. There's times we can't hear our phones.
Yeah. Well, we were in here meeting this morning, and it was, you know, so, but, anyway, so that, that's going to be delayed slightly. They should have at least one replaced, so we should be good, you know, for this foreseeable future. I just wanted everybody to be aware of that.
Can you go?
I don't know if it on the handbook yet. In fact, I'm going to move that to the back to multi-quarter because what, what was that?
Could I ask you to go back to that other column you skipped, the multi-quarter?
Yeah.
Maximus at the bottom?
Yep. That'll be next quarter.
Well, that's the one that I had asked the commissioners to.
Oh, right.
If we can actually look into seeing if there's any way we can put that off possibly one year, purely because we've got Susquehanna now that will be coming in, and we have a brand-new auditing firm that's going to be coming in probably.
Did you contact them as?
I haven't.
Well, I mean, don't we have an agreement with them already?
We have a signed agreement, we've not paid any money yet, they've not done any work for us yet. Their work was contingent on when we get our audit completed, our current audit, and have all of that before they came in here to do anything. But at the time we agreed to Maximus, we didn't have Susquehanna coming in at the same time. And to bring all three of those in next year relatively around the same period of time to do stuff is really going to be tough. And we may do some, on a new audit firm's recommendation and Susquehanna's recommendation, we may be making changes where Maximus will work out allocations, and then they'll have to come back and kind of rework them because we've been advised a different way that we should possibly be handling some of those.
So I'm fine with asking them if we're going to ship it back here. Is that all right with you two?
I mean, you know, most of the push for Maximus was related to the audit of domestic relations.
Domestic relations. And they get audited.
Once every year?
Yeah, once every three years, so it'll be a while before they get hit again. As a matter of fact, they don't even have the results of their audit back yet. They haven't closed the state's audit on domestic relations, so, you know, we will, if we bring them in one year, if we bring Maximus into action one year later, they'll still be here before the state comes back for its next audit.
And my understanding is, I mean, is it Maximus just going to be reviewing all of the data and then making recommendations as well, I mean, related to?
They'll be looking for not just what we have been allocating, but they'll be going through all of our accounting records to see if there's something we could have been allocating that we weren't.
Exactly, yeah, they'll make recommendations.
So it is going to be a lot of dig through.
Which they're going to do retroactively, so if they do it a year from now, it's, you know, they're going to get.
No, we can't retroactive, go back on.
Well, no, 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 my point is is they'll will be looking back.
Yes, yes, they will be, yes, they will be auditing, or they will, they will be reviewing the prior year to make a determination of whether we were doing it correctly or if we need to change for the coming year, yes.
Okay, good, so go ahead and.
Okay, thank you.
We're meeting with AOPC funds this week.
This week, yes.
For, to go over requisition of the budget module, so that's the update on that.
There's, there's a lot of things they're trying to train us on, and on the requisitions, we just have a very bare bones start of the setup yet, there's still a lot of background work that we have to build into it. And I've also let the auditors know Treasury, aside from the commissioners, I think that's it, oh, Keith and Pam too, so if they, if any of them needed time for a few things.
Sure. Marketing task, of course, you have a meeting since last week, didn't you?
Our next meeting is in like a week.
Oh, okay. The bike trail benches got delivered, correct?
They, they're at the warehouse. They'll, with, with the timeframe, we decided to let them sit through the winter. They've been sealed, so we'll be installing them in spring. They look great, I'm really impressed with what the block company, I can never remember their name. It's Star Rec. Whitmire Block, the work that they did was very impressive. But yeah, they're stored in the warehouse, Matt and a number of people from the community helped move them, so. In the spring, whenever the weather clears, we'll install them down on the bike trail. They're made out of pressed, like, as I said, like pressed concrete, so it has like pattern, pattern on it, has a natural look to it, they have this, this finish that they mix into the concrete. They weigh 700 pounds installed, and they'll be anchored into the ground, so it'd always be impossible to really do any damage to them or remove them from the bike trail, so I think that they'll be pretty, it'll be a pretty.
How many did you get?
I think there's eight or nine along, that'll be along, there's, there'll be a couple out next to the state hospital where the soccer grounds are, so people can sit there. And, so it'll be a nice, it'll be a nice setup.
Do we have an estimated cost on those at all?
Uh, yeah, it's not going to be, it's, it'll, it won't be significant.
I'm just curious.
Was it?
Pardon me?
It would pull that $13,000.
Yes.
I'm just curious, because we do have to do something on our insurance for the bike hike trail, so if we've done any enhancement to it, we just need to be sure that we've got the benches listed, that they go along with the bike hike trail. I have no idea money-wise what you're talking about.
So you're talking value, not?
Yes, yes, the value of benches.
Yeah, when we, when we went to deliver them, he hadn't put an invoice together yet, so.
And by the way, when's the grand party?
December 16th.
Is it official?
Yep. I'll be sending an email around today, hopefully.
You're saying?
You kind of spelled it wrong. Last year, asking directors if they'd like to.
Yep. Yeah, so it'll be, it'll be open to the, to the employees and their significant others. And we'll do, we'll send a save the date thing around, and then we'll have a separate email that we'll send to the directors, just so that, and probably what's going to happen is, is in the next week, we'll have a, a meeting with the directors or the people that are interested in helping with the event, so that everybody that wants to do something for it, help set it up, get something they can. We'll have an online setup, RSVP, so that all the employees that want to go can sign up for it. It was a lot of fun last year, so.
It was a lot of fun.
Yeah, so, hopefully this will be bigger and better.
You looking at the baskets?
Yeah. Yeah. Pam's going to handle, or Pam's already working on all of the prizes stuff, like, we have been collecting stuff from, like, the, like, we get all of these gifts from the insurance company and all this other stuff, and so they, they're literally stacked in the corner of Pam's office behind the door, and the she's saving.
It's from Quill.
Yeah, from Quill.
Not the insurance company.
Oh, yeah. Well, oh, yeah, okay, so yeah, well, like, basically because of all the purchasing that Marga and now Stephanie have done, they, for whatever reason, they send us all these free gifts and stuff.
You have a page, you can go out once your order hits a certain amount, and it changes every month, and it used to be just things like popcorn cookies and coffee for in the office, and then recently they started changing and putting other items out there, so.
Overstocked, probably.
Well, they're not really office supply things, I mean, there's been baking dishes, there's a couple of insulated coolers that look like big pop cans and cute little insulated lunch bag.
All right, any other projects to bring up?
Is spectrometry uncompleted?
It is. Yep. Okay. Anything to make up on schedules you want to bring up? We've got a lot of project meetings, basically. Well, of course, we're going to CCAP. I'm leaving on the, I have my first meeting on the 18th, so.
This Friday is Veterans Day, what are, do we need to have a conversation about planning for that?
Veterans Day is actually Saturday.
Yeah, well, I mean, sorry.
Friday is the day off.
Yeah, so, sorry, so Saturday, do we have something, what is the plan for Saturday? I mean.
Delivering a proclamation somewhere.
Okay.
There are several places having their Veterans Day ceremonies, there's also a breakfast at the Fire Hall in Youngsville, there is a lunch at the Eagles Club. I heard that there was a buffet at the Moes.
And then the DAV is, yeah, is Sunday, correct?
They have not contacted me, so I'm assuming I've got Sunday off.
Well, I'm pretty sure I'm going to, sometime next day.
I've got one on the evening of the 9th and 28th.
No, I don't think I need that one.
Other than that, I don't really have anything.
Okay. How was the budget for the budget? Sorry. The agenda look for Wednesday? We will add the TAM. Anything else that's missing?
Did you want, I was able to get ahold of the DAV finally.
Oh, great.
So I didn't know if you wanted to talk about that now, or?
No, I'm just talking about that later. Okay, anything else? Any public comment?
I just wanted to bring up the public fundraising launch for the Riverland again. I just wanted to bring up the public fundraising launch for the Riverland Day. I think each one of you got individual little invites.
Tomorrow.
What's that?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, yeah. From 5:15, I think to 8:30 or 8:00. There'll be food, drinks, what have you. The brochure is on what we're doing, the project we're working on.
It'll be at?
Calm.
Oh, okay.
First of all.
Um, I can't be there the entire time. What's the best time to drive by?
5:15 to 8:00. Yeah, be good.
I'll probably come in like 6:00 to 7:00 or something.
Okay.
Is there a presentation, or is it just?
At some point, there'll be a small presentation, but there'll be brochures and flutters and stuff like that to explain what we're doing.
Okay, very good. And this is the Leadership Born County project, or is it the city?
This was, I think initially, a leadership project.
Okay.
That Mary Hagan did, and then now it's kind of formed its own little.
Oh, okay, I didn't know that. Good. Well, look forward to it, no work tomorrow anymore. Okay, anything else? Very good, Richard.